All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to do a roll call.
Counselor Tejera.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Saniget.
Here.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Present.
Counselor De Jesus.
Present.
Counselor Brown.
Here.
Counselor Coopero.
Here, here.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Here.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yeah.
Ten members present, you have a call.
Perfect, first order, memoriam's and celebratory resolutions.
We have a resolution introduced by Council President De Jesus and all members of the City Council congratulating Chelsea Fire Chief Leonard Albanese on his retirement. Whereas Chelsea Fire Chief Leonard Lenny Albanese has announced his retirement after eight years of service as fire chief in the city of Chelsea. And whereas Chief Albanese entered the firing profession in 1986 as a member of the North Providence, Rhode Island Fire Department, where he served for thirty years, including six years as chief of the department. And whereas Chief Albanese was selected to serve as fire chief for the city of Chelsea in April 2016. And whereas Chief Albanese has been instrumental in leading the Chelsea Fire Department, implementing significant administrative and operational improvements. And whereas Chief Albanese has consistently demonstrated a level of commitment, dedication, integrity, and professionalism which exemplifies excellence in the firefighting profession. And whereas throughout his career, Chief Albanese has put his life on the line in an effort to protect the safety of others, always working diligently to protect his community and its residents from fires and other dangers. And whereas Chief Albanese has been a committed and dedicated public servant, working tirelessly to improve the firefighting profession in the states of Rhode Island and Massachusetts. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council, on behalf of the residents of the city of Chelsea, wish Chief Leonard Lenny Albanese a very happy and healthy retirement, expresses his profound gratitude for his years of service as chief of the Chelsea Fire Department, and acknowledges the bravery, courage, professionalism, and selfish dedication he has demonstrated throughout his long and distinguished career.
All right, I'd like to open it up for any remarks from my colleagues.
Make a motion to adopt it under suspension, Madam President.
Okay, motion to adopt, thank you Counselor. Would you like to speak on it?
Yes, thank you. Just want to thank the chief for the extraordinary work that you did here. You've been here for a while, you came in and you jumped right into the shift of things. You did a great job without budgeting here. You had a great crew with you that supported you and did all the really heavy lifting, but you were the captain of that ship. And I just want to thank you and wish you well in your retirement, and thank you again.
Thank you, Madam.
Thank you Counselor, Counselor Coopero.
I can express the appreciation of all of us to have a fire chief like you. You've been one of the best fire chiefs that the city has had for a long time. You are a very pleasant person and a person that deals with everybody in a nice way. If any of us ever had any question, we can come to you, you would answer all our questions. It will be our loss that you're leaving, but it's your gain that you're retiring, and you get to enjoy your life.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Taylor?
Chief, we are very sorry to lose you, but like Counselor Coopero said, our loss is your gain. But I really wanted to thank you for coming in and really kind of creating, sorry, order out of chaos. And really, you're the consummate professional, and I really appreciate that. I'm not easily impressed, but you managed to do it, and I really thank you from the bottom of my heart. The city, I think, thanks you, and we're all better off for you being here. Thank you very much.
Thank you Counselor, Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Chief, you'll be missed greatly, but as I echo the sentiment of my councilmen up here, every day you showed up, and I thank you for that. And the community thanks you. We are sad to see you go, but we're so happy that you're retiring. Your daughter can enjoy her dad and many hours as you enter this chapter in your life. So thank you for your commitment to the city of Chelsea. I really appreciate you.
Thank you Counselor. Okay, Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Chief, I want to thank you. Your years here in Chelsea have been amazing. Your leadership with our department has been extraordinary. I have the most admiration for you, and I'm very happy that you're retiring. Enjoy your retirement, thank you.
Thank you Counselor, Counselor Robinson.
I'd like to say thank you. You came to Chelsea in a very unbalanced time. You were able to put in a lot of initiatives and programs in the Fire Department, and we, the people of Chelsea, thank you. And I'll leave you with our famous, what's going on?
Thank you Counselor. All right, so I know that our state rep is joining us today, and she has some gifts as well. If I could have one of my colleagues suspend the rules so that we can... Thank you Counselor, and will you join us up here in the podium? Oh, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I'd like to take a moment to congratulate Chief Albanese. It's been eight years that you were here. And on a personal anecdote, I had the honor to be on the hiring panel, the panel that interviewed all the candidates. And when you stepped in, you made quite the impression, we saw a leader walk in. And I think that what made your interview particularly special is that when we asked you, why Chelsea? You said, your daughter. You wanted to come here to Massachusetts to be closer to your daughter, yes? But also because you wanted to make an impact, and you wanted to do something that was going to be rewarding, that was going to bring a change to the community, and it did. So I thank you for those eight years of great service. You had thick skin, because I know it wasn't easy to be here for the first few months, first few years, but you went past through that, you led with courage. And thank you so much for that undeterred leadership, for being an example, not only in our city, but also statewide. There are beautiful people out there that have nothing else to say but incredible things about your leadership and you as a person. You're a great human being, thank you for being an amazing leader. I wish you nothing but the best. And with the resolution that the City Council will introduce you, I have something from the state, and it is a great honor to give you that along with a special photo on behalf of the fire chiefs of the state. So congratulations, and it's been an honor to serve alongside you in the past eight years. So congratulations.
Thank you Representative. I will now call for a five-minute recess for pictures and for us to be able to give you your gifts.
Order, order.
All right. All right Counselors. I want to invite our chief, our former chief of Fire Department, to join us for a few remarks.
I just want to say thank you to the members of the council. From early on, I always had the support of the council as the faces have changed. And it's been a pleasure to serve the city of Chelsea and this historic beloved Fire Department. We're in really good hands. I want to thank Tom Ambrosino for giving me the opportunity, Brian Capistrano and the members of the union, who, we had a rough start, but we've worked together, and I'm proud to say, of the many accomplishments I think we've had, the relationship between the union and the city right now is on stronger ground than ever, and I'm pretty proud of that. So I thank you for this, and that's it, thanks.
Thank you Chief. All right, continuing with our celebratory resolutions.
We have a resolution introduced by Council President De Jesus and all members of the Council for Women's History Month. Whereas throughout the history of the United States, whether in the home, in the workplace, schools, courts, or during wartime, women have fought for themselves, their families, and all people of the United States. And whereas in 1980, President Jimmy Carter recognized March 2nd through March 8th as Women's History Week in the United States, noting that while men and women worked together to build this nation, too often, women were unsung, and sometimes their contributions went unnoticed. But the achievements, leadership, courage, strength, and love of the women who built America was as vital as that of the men whose names we know so well. And whereas in 1981, a bipartisan group of senators co-sponsored the first congressional resolution proclaiming Women's History Week in the United States. And whereas in response to growing observations across the country and advocacy by the National Women's History Project, Congress declared March Women's History Month in 1987, and President Ronald Reagan introduced a corresponding presidential proclamation, an act followed by every subsequent U.S. president. And whereas women played leading roles in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, labor movements, the civil rights movement, and other causes to create a more fair and just society. And whereas Jeanette Rankin was the first woman elected to Congress in 1916, representing Montana in the House of Representatives, while Hady Wyatt Caraway was the first woman elected to the Senate in 1932, serving the people of Arkansas. And whereas here in Massachusetts, Susan Fitzgerald, Democrat of Jamaica Plain, and Sylvia Donaldson, Republican of Brockton, were the first women elected to the State House of Representatives in 1923, while Sybil Holmes, Republican of Brookline, was the first woman elected to the State Senate in 1937. And whereas women in Massachusetts have continued to make inroads in government, with Lieutenant Governor Evelyn Murphy becoming the first woman elected to statewide office in 1987, followed by Shannon O'Brien as the first female treasurer in 1999, Jane Swift as the first woman to serve as acting governor in 2001, Martha Coakley as the first female attorney general in 2006, Susan Bump as the first female auditor in 2010, and Elizabeth Warren as the first female senator in 2013. And whereas Maury Haley became the first woman and first openly gay governor of Massachusetts in 2022, and alongside Lieutenant Governor Kim Driscoll, make Massachusetts the only state to have women serving as both governor and lieutenant governor. And whereas following state elections in 2022, which saw Andrea Campbell also make history as the first black woman elected attorney general in Massachusetts, and the first woman of color to win a statewide election in Massachusetts, women now hold five of six statewide elected offices in the state. And whereas despite the advancements of women in the United States, much remains to be done to ensure that women realize their full potential as equal members of society in the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council recognizes March 2024 as Women's History Month in the city of Chelsea, acknowledges the achievements of women throughout our nation's history, and urges all residents to take time to reflect on the many notable contributions that women have made to the United States.
Thank you Clerk, do I hear a motion on the floor? Yes, Counselor Robinson.
A roll call vote on the adoption. I think it's important that we make a positive vote here, and also like to thank the women who we have here serving our community, and along with a lot of the other women who give a lot of time to our community. I just want to say personally, thank you.
Thank you Counselor. I will allow the clerk to conduct the speakers. Counselor Brown.
Thank you Madam President. Again, I thank you for the resolution as we honor the women and observe all the work that's been done and their contributions in our society, and we highlight this year tonight as we celebrate it. But I also like to reflect what Counselor Robinson said. We have amongst us a lot of dedicated, hardworking women that I'm proud, that we're proud of here in the city of Chelsea. Our state rep, Judith Garcia, the first Latino that served as a state rep from the city of Chelsea, we're so proud of, and her accomplishment, and just to go on the heels of the accomplishments that we speak of today, we recognize and appreciate you ladies for the work that you do. Some of you are mothers, some of you are sisters, aunties, grandparents. You still do the job that requires to continue to nurture not only our fabric, but our community. And I also like to personally thank the women of Market Bastard, the mullahs. If you've ever been down there, any aisle that you walk through, you see those women, they're working tirelessly, they're just, you know, they're making that store what it is today, and it's not so much that folks go there to get a great bargain, they go there because people really care about the workers there, and the workers there really show. And I want to say that publicly, I appreciate every time I go there that I see those women. And those women too, not because they're elected official or office holder, but because their dedication and what they do for their families, to provide for their families. I want to also say that I'm very appreciative of those women and all the women that make up our cities with the nonprofits and special organizations to help nurture our community.
Thank you Madam President.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Coopero.
I'll stand up, my knees hurt, so I'll talk from the microphone. There is no words to say thank you to women, because without women, there'd be none of us. And there's another thing that's very important. I'd like to thank all the mothers that create the rest of us. They work hard their whole lives and teach the rest of us how to be good human beings. What else can you say about women? They're the greatest thing God gave us. They say they come from us, but in the end, they are us. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor. All right, we will proceed with a roll call vote.
A yes vote is to adopt. Counselor Tejera.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor and none opposed, one absent, the resolution is adopted.
Okay, moving on to public hearing, we don't have one today. Public speaking portion. Anyone here wish to speak? Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes.
We have a request of approval of the minutes of the February 12, 2014, regular meeting of the City Council.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as recorded.
Thank you Counselor. Moving on to the next order of business, communications from the city manager.
We have a copy of a communication received from City Manager Fidel Maltese regarding Chelsea Fire Chief appointment. Dear Counselors, through a previous communication, I notified the City Council that our fire chief, Leonard Albanese, announced his retirement. Fire Chief Albanese served our community admirably, and we thank him for his years of service. Upon this announcement, we posted the vacant position and created a hiring committee. The hiring committee was made up of a diverse body of members, all invested in the long-term success of our Fire Department and our city. The hiring committee interviewed all applicants and made a unanimous decision to proceed with John Cotteri as our next fire chief. I'm excited to report to the Chelsea City Council that John Cotteri will be appointed to serve as chief of the Fire Department for the city of Chelsea effective March 8th, 2024. John Cotteri has been with the Chelsea Fire Department for thirty-two years. Mr. Cotteri has been a deputy chief since 2006, and for the last eight years has served as deputy chief of operations, responsible for the day-to-day of the Fire Department. Mr. Cotteri has the leadership skills and technical knowledge to lead Chelsea's Fire Department. Most importantly, Mr. Cotteri is intimately involved in our city, leading various community efforts. I have asked John Cotteri to set up meetings with each member of the City Council over the next few months, and continue the collaborative relationship between the fire chief and the City Council. Please join me in congratulating John Cotteri on his appointment.
Do I hear a motion?
Madam. Move to accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objection.
Okay, seeing no objections, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Fidel Maltese requesting appointments to boards and commissions. Dear Counselors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to board in commissions in the city. For appointment to the Board of Trustees of the Library, Ms. Jordana Mather of Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring March 18th, 2027. And for appointment to the Chelsea Tree Board, Mr. Raymond Gomez of Chelsea, for a new three-year term expiring March 18th, 2027. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Copies of resumes are attached.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion for to move to second reading.
Motion to move to second reading. Seeing no objections, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Fidel Maltese requesting appointment to Retirement Board of the City Manager's Designee. Dear Counselors, pursuant to Section 4-2 of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend that Cheryl Watson Fisher, our city solicitor, for appointment to the Chelsea Retirement Board. Our city solicitor has served admirably as the city manager's designee to the retirement board for over seven years. The city solicitor's reappointment will ensure continuity in our processes, particularly as it affects our retirees. This term expires May 21st, 2027. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment.
Announce for a roll call vote on the adoption, if there are no objections.
Counselor, do you wish to move to a second reading?
I'd ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. I will ask for a clerk's advice, would be, is that...
There's no rule that stipulates it, as if there's no objection.
Okay, if there's no objections, we'll move to a roll call vote.
A yes vote is to adopt. Counselor Tejera.
Yes.
Counselor Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenere Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Saniget.
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera.
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus.
Yes.
Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Counselor Coopero.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia.
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. Appointment is approved.
Okay, moving on.
Next, we have a communication received from City Manager Fidel Maltese regarding the establishment of Chelsea's Women's Commission. Dear Counselors, in celebration of Women's History Month, I would like to announce the creation of the Chelsea Women's Commission. Our commission will greatly mirror the Commonwealth's Women's Commission, established through Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 3, Section 66. The Chelsea Women's Commission will work on the following areas. Study, review, and report on the status of women in Chelsea. Inform leaders of business, education, healthcare, and local government, and the communications media of issues pertaining to women. Serve as a liaison between government and the larger community concerning issues affecting women. Serve as a clearinghouse for information on issues pertaining to women. Identify and recommend qualified women for appointed positions in city government, including boards and commissions, as the commission deems necessary and appropriate. Assess programs and practices in all city government as they affect women, as the commission deems necessary and appropriate. Promote and facilitate collaboration among Chelsea's Women's Commissions and among women's organizations in the state, as the commission deems necessary and appropriate. The commission shall annually, honor before June 2nd, report the results of its findings and activities of the preceding year, and its recommendations to the city manager and the City Council. The city manager's office will begin advertising the positions for the Chelsea Women's Commission. We hope to submit candidates for the appointment to the City Council as soon as possible. The Chelsea Women's Commission will be the responsibility of our Director of DEI, who will work tirelessly to ensure that this commission is a resounding success. We look forward to engaging with the City Council and our community at large through this commission. Attached you will find an executive order forming the Chelsea Women's Commission and a presentation from our Director of DEI.
Counselor Tenere Garcia, do you have a motion?
I would like to move this order to a roll call vote, and I would like to speak on it.
The floor is yours.
This Women's Commission is crucial and plays a huge role in advocating for gender equality and empower women to achieve their full potential in all aspects of life. And I feel like this is much needed in our city, even though women are taken over the world. But I do feel that especially our youth need more guidance, because moms are too busy working two, three jobs to keep a roof over their heads. And it's crucial for the city to step in and play a role in supporting these very busy moms.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Tejera.
First, I would like to thank the city manager for putting this together. It's, you know, very well thought out, and I'm really looking forward to what the Women's Commission of Chelsea is going to be working on, and it's looking very promising. Again, we already have women leadership with President Norrie Lee, so I myself grew up with six sisters, all of them older than me, so I've always been under the leadership of women. And I will say, I think they did a pretty good job, so we look forward to this.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Brown.
Thank you Madam President. Thank... Oh, yeah. Thank you, Madam President. I want to commend the city manager. This is something that the City Council, past members have been trying to work for. I'm glad to see that this commission is now coming to fruition, where we can actually hear that it's now being developed, and now has spots and communication in front of us exactly what would like to come out of it. So I'm excited about that. I'm excited about the women joining, and about the women just coming with their perspective and their point of view, how we continue to work on the things in government that men may not feel to address, or may have failed to address. And I just look forward to working with that point of view. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you Counselor. Counselor Kelly Garcia.
I'll make this super brief, but team, I'm super excited about this initiative. You know, in a male-dominated world, I think more commissions like this will support the development of our young women, young girls. And as my counselor colleague here, Tenere Garcia, mentioned, many moms are out there working hard. And so it is our duty, our civic duty, to support the youth in their development, and to support moms too, that are out there working and running a whole household, saving money, paying bills, and doing all of the things that they need to do to survive. And so thank you to the women who will be a part of this. And also, we will probably meet a lot of big sisters, as we will be hosting a Little Sister, Big Sister program. So if you're out there and you're listening, and you want to inspire and want to support this program, I look forward to working with you all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Saniget?
Yes, um, I just want to say that I think it's vital at this particular point in time for us, um, to move forward and push for systems, policies, funding, programs for women of all ages and in all facets of life. So this is of paramount importance now.
Thank you, councillor. Before we move into a roll call, just want to quickly shout out Luldes from our city manager's office for her leadership on this, as well as our city solicitor Cheryl and our DEI director Candace. They are really the champions behind the scenes that are putting all the details together for us to get this rolling. So thank you guys so much. Um, and we'll move to a roll call.
What are we voting on? Is this, this is already created?
It's, yeah, showing the support to accept.
We're voting on accepting, okay, got it.
Point, point, point of information here. We're, we're voting on accepting and filing the communication? Is that what we're doing?
Yes, I'm going to ask our city clerk to explain for you.
So, under normal policy, when a city manager creates an administrative order, if the council just accept and files it, it goes into effect thirty days after the council receives it. If you vote to affirm the administrative order, it will go into effect effective Wednesday, once our reconsideration period is done. So if you approve it tonight by roll call, it'll go into effect faster, otherwise it will wait for thirty days.
Thank you, clerk. Any other questions? All right, moving forward.
A yes vote is to accept the administrative order establishing the Chelsea Women's Commission. Councillor Teshi?
Yes.
Councillor Taylor?
Yes.
Councillor Vega, absent. Councillor Tenere Garcia?
Yes.
Councillor Saniget?
Yes.
Councillor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Councillor De Jesus?
Yes.
Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Councillor Coopero? Councillor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent. The administrative order has been accepted.
Thank you, clerk. Moving forward now.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese regarding the city of Chelsea's launching for the Fair Housing Plan. Dear councillors, I am pleased to inform that the city of Chelsea has launched its Fair Housing Plan and is now available on the city's website in English and Spanish. The city of Chelsea's Department of Housing and Community Development, with funding from the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Developments, Community Development Block Grant Program, and the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, has launched a fair housing plan in collaboration with residents, housing agencies, and community-based organizations to vigorously address housing discrimination. Housing discrimination affects a wide range of residents and is rooted in racial and economic inequalities. In response, an equitable fair housing plan was set as a major priority of the Chelsea Young Adult Alliance and Chelsea Black Community. The plan will help to identify needs and barriers to fair and affordable housing and establish goals and strategies for breaking down the barriers to equitable, healthy housing opportunities in the city of Chelsea. The Chelsea Fair Housing Plan addresses equitable access to housing choice in the city of Chelsea. Since the passage of the Federal Fair Housing Act of nineteen sixty-eight, all communities that receive funding from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development have had an obligation to affirmatively further fair housing. The ultimate goal of fair housing efforts is to eliminate housing discrimination and resident segregation. This plan aims to advance these objectives through analysis of existing conditions and recommendations for concrete action that the city can undertake.
Thank you, clerk. Do I hear a motion on the floor?
I'd like to make a motion to accept and file under suspension if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it, if that's okay.
You have the floor, councillor.
Awesome team. So as the Chair of the Subcommittee on Housing, I'm super excited to learn more about this, to educate our community on this. Um, and I would like to thank in advance my colleagues on the Subcommittee, Todd Taylor, or councillor Todd Taylor and Todd, like Roberto Jimenez, councillor Roberto Jimenez, sorry. Um, so stay tuned for more.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Coopero?
This is going to Subcommittee, right? We sending it to Subcommittee?
Is that what you wish?
Yes, I would like to send it to Subcommittee, because I truly don't understand some of the stuff that's on here. Like, I can't under- some of it doesn't go to Subcommittee? Can I send it to Subcommittee?
Absolutely.
I would like to send this to Subcommittee, so we can really understand what is, what does the city intend to do? How do they go about it? Because it's kind of, from what I read here, housing discrimination and segregation. I don't think our city has discrimination and segregation. So I don't understand what that word means exactly. I want to know. How, so what does that mean?
Okay, so we will, are you, will you put a motion on the floor?
Yeah, to send it to Subcommittee.
Okay.
I amended to send it to Subcommittee.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor, uh, Taylor?
Yeah, I welcome this in the Subcommittee. I, this, when this was, was sent out, uh, this is an extremely lengthy, um, plan. And I think this, this, this is going to need a lot of digestion and, uh, and supervision on this, because, uh, you know, something, something this, I mean, I, I think it was over a hundred pages. One twenty-nine. So, you know, uh, somebody wrote a treatise on this, so we're, we'll, 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 we'll have to, uh, really digest it in Subcommittee. I'm sure it will take more than one hearing, uh, to get through this. So, um, I look forward to analyzing, uh, all of this in depth.
Thank you, councillor. All right, seeing no more remarks, we're going to move to the next item on the agenda.
Next, we have a communication received from city manager Fidel Maltese responding to council order twenty-four seventy-eight, informing Chelsea residents about street closures and diversions due to construction or infrastructure work. Dear councillors, I am writing in response to your recent council order regarding new methods of informing Chelsea residents about street closures. We appreciate the frustration residents experience when there is an unannounced road closure. We commit to being better at communication, especially with this year's construction season quickly approaching. I have tasked our Director of Constituent Services, Bernabei Rodriguez, with implementing policies, coordinating with all city departments, responding to resident complaints, and most importantly, communicating with the city council. Mr. Rodriguez has created an internal email distribution list.
Councillor Coopero requests to waive the rest of the reading.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. I'd like to speak on it.
You have the floor, councillor.
This is, um, an ongoing thing. It's been going on for a long time with the resident of our city not being able, or being, not even being very well informed. It's happening within my district and it's happening within all of our districts. They close off certain sections, and I know it's going, I'm retelling, I'm going back to the same issue again, but the same issue keeps popping up. So how do we fix this, the issue that we have? Right now, today, there was a big problem, uh, down near the mullahs. They had one side of the street closed, and everybody had to go because they had, what Reggie's used to be. Where Reggie's is, they closed that street off, and nobody could go there. So everybody had to go all the way around, and everything was blocked. So if they, I told the people in advance, do not go. Instead of putting it right there in the beginning, tell them a little farther down the road, so the people, before they even venture into going into that area, would know where it is. And, um, and something in this paper that it's kind of funny, that we, we got this order here, this order twenty-four seventy-eight, and then it says, uh, any member of the city council would like to include in daily email, please let us know. Any member, we should all know. That, that order should have said, any city councillor, you know, we automatically send it to you. So if we don't request it, we don't get it, it should come to us automatic, if that's what you intend to do. All of us should always be notified of what's going on. That says, well, if you don't want to know, we're not going to tell you. Well, that's not how it works. We want to know, because our constituents need to know. They matter. I don't know, maybe they don't matter to the city, but they matter to me, they matter to the rest of us. We want to make their lives better. And if we cannot make their lives better, what are we here for? Our purpose is to make their life easier, have a better quality of life. And from what I see, our city is overcrowded right now with cars. There's no way to move, there's no way to park. I know we can resolve the issue all at once, but we can at least try to facilitate their lives to be better than what it is. It's all I'm asking for. There's better communication between us, the city, and the people that live in our city.
Thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor Teshi?
Definitely, I would say, you know, the, the, it, it would be nice to automatically have all the city council be included in it. I will say, um, again, definitely thank you to the city manager for, um, you know, putting in specifically an advancement in, in expanding on the use of an app that will let everybody know what's going on throughout the city, and this will be open to the public, so that at all times, in real time, you will know what roads are closed in the city of Chelsea. So just a huge shout out on that. I think that's going to be really good implementation. And, uh, just adding that, you know, uh, it is planned to, uh, be expanded on, um, be expanded on the, um, awareness of such apps. So I think that's a really good initiative.
Thank you, councillor. All right, seeing no other comments, I'm going to ask my colleague councillor Taylor to please step in for me.
Next order of business, we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from council president Norrie Lee De Jesus regarding the appointment of a special youth, of a special committee on youth sports in Chelsea. Dear honourable members of the city council, last year, concerns were raised about actions undertaken by the leadership of Chelsea Pride Football, the team's suspension from the league, and the resulting impact on the youth who participated. Numerous concerned parents came before the city council to express their concerns, and a consensus was reached among the councillors present that the council should have a role in encouraging and promoting youth sports in Chelsea. While the issues raised were addressed, the former leadership no longer in position of authority, and the team reinstated. Lingering concerns remain about the stability of youth sports leagues in Chelsea and the level of support provided by the city. In response to those concerns, and in keeping with the council's priority to increase opportunities for youth in the city of Chelsea, please be advised that I am creating a special committee on youth sports in Chelsea to be comprised of the following members. Councillor Taylor, Todd Taylor as Chair, as amended by councillor President De Jesus. It will now include councillors Taylor, councillor Tenere Garcia, and councillor Melinda Vega. I believe the members of this committee will work together to encourage youth sports league. She amended it.
Okay, but we have difference here, so I know all the council's looking. There's different names in mind.
Can I, uh, I was going to wait until he finished speaking, but I can make the amendment now.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just want to make sure we're following.
Chair recognizes councillor, uh, De Jesus.
Thank you, Vice President. Um, so first, I want to, um, acknowledge that I will be amending this order to reflect not councillor Robinson, but instead councillor Tenere Garcia, and that is simply because, uh, conversations happened, and, um, councillors want to be mindful of the time and dedication, um, and commitment that will, uh, this committee, uh, will entail. And, um, and on top of that, I just want to, um, uh, reassure the public that this is, um, this order is coming not, uh, from myself alone, but from my colleagues, councillor Taylor and councillor Robinson, as well as councillor Saniget, and many of the other councillors here who continue to uplift, uh, the importance of us, uh, taking necessary actions now to, uh, protect, support, guide our youth, um, especially after the rising concerns of violence, mental health, um, and all the above. And so this is simply an effort for us to create, um, a, a, a table where deeper conversations can happen regarding, uh, sports and recreational activities for, for our youth, whether that's football, soccer, um, Little League, softball. Um, and so I am excited, and I know that, uh, that these conversations will be in good hands with, um, councillor Taylor, um, councillor, uh, Melinda Vega, and councillor Tenere Garcia. Thank you.
Councillor Jimenez?
I, um, first of all, I just want to say thank you for, for bringing this up. I know that it has been a, a conversation that many folks have been having since before the term started, so, um, thank you for this. I guess my, my question is why, uh, moving forward with a special committee rather than using the Subcommittee on Arts, Culture, and Recreational Affairs to manage this conversation?
Yeah, there's, there's no debate on this.
Oh, okay.
Anyone else?
I can speak?
Yeah.
Can I speak or?
Councillor Robinson first.
Yeah, I'm done.
Are you, pardon me, are, are you finished?
I just, I, I think, I think it should, uh, it, we should try to use the Subcommittee structure that we've created unless we have a, a reason not to.
Councillor Robinson?
Yeah, I, I think it's very important that we do look at this, but I think we need to look beyond sports. And when I say that, you know, you got to talk about mentorships. You also got to talk about taking Chelsea kids out of Chelsea and showing them other things in the world. It's not just about sports. You know, it's about education, you know? And if we're only going to approach it at looking at sports, we're going to lose right from the start. So we need to figure out how we're going to organize it, what we're looking at, and how we're going to present it to the community. Thank you.
Councillor Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I asked that, if, if I can, um, if we can move this to Subcommittee on Conference, um, with some of the debate that's been spoken. I think we need more to have, um, in-depth of conversation far as this city council members, what we would like this committee to look into and address, and some of our concerns and some of our thoughts. And I think by having all the members at the table first, you can get an understanding where, you know, the care and the dedication that we really want to put this into. Um, we're thinking about really putting, you know, our hands into grabbing our youth and working with them and inspiring them. But I believe that the city council members at first should also, you know, convene and have a conversation and say, this is some of the things that we would look to come out of it. It's almost like what we just did with our priorities. Have some priority lists, and then we'll give the committee that's been appointed by the president an opportunity to go and refine and shape and, and bring our ideas in place with what they would like also to see. Thank you.
Councillor Coopero?
To follow up my fellow councillor says, not just sports, this city actually needs Community Center One, and also needs maybe a program like Choice for Education used to have, where the young man and women of our city will get for a week, and they will go to a university or to some kind of college or something and see how it is. And, uh, this city is lacking that for a very long time. And I believe, and most of us believe, I think all of us believe, that the youths of our city deserve more opportunities than they have now. And one of the biggest opportunities for them to have is maybe to have some type of fund, where the city itself and the city gets together with some type of universities, just like Choice for Education used to do. And they will go there, and for maybe a certain amount of time during a year, they would take so many children from schools or whatever it is, and we'll send them there, and we'll educate them how to, there's a different world besides this class, to, to understand. And that helped my children. When they were young, Choice for Education helped my children a lot. It helped my grandchildren, it taught them. You know, it, it taught them to, 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 to adjust better with society, and I believe they became better human beings for it. And our city is lacking that. And I've been pushing for years to have something like that to go on for our kids. And I think it's very important that the council, that the committee that they, they form or whatever, when we go to Subcommittee, that will find some kind of, uh, agreement where the city can sponsor these children, or young adults, to go to a place like this. I think it's beneficial to them, and it would be beneficial to the city itself. Thank you.
I think Tenere first, and then?
I agree with my fellow colleagues, but I also believe that we haven't been able to fix the small, smaller issues, um, especially with our sports and, and the many hiccups that we've had throughout the year, through, throughout the years. And, um, I definitely agree with councillor Robinson about looking beyond sports. I think that there's so much more to offer our youth. We have to fix the sports part first before we get into anything bigger. Um, but I do agree that we need preventive matters for our youth before they get into any trouble, and keep them very occupied. Um, but we've been, I think we need to be more supportive. more supportive for our sports, especially for those who wanna be involved, don't know how to handle and how to take on a league or be part of the board. And there's many moving features that we, we should at least guide them. We don't have to do the work for them, but guidance is necessary to keep our sports and, and our youth in, in the right path. That's it.
Councillor Sandigay?
Thank you. I agree that it is important to try to, that sports are very important for our young people here, very popular, all the leagues are full. And I think that it should be an "and" situation, sports and other things. We live, Boston is a world-class city with universities, museums that people come from far and wide to visit. I think that we need to develop a well-rounded program for our youth. And if we can't have a museum here, we need leaders and mentors and people to lead the Chelsea youth into the city. We're a part of greater Boston. It takes so little time to get there. And I think that we need to have a broad range of programs and interests for our youth. Not everyone is sporty. And also, not to discount the great offerings of all the higher educational institutions that we have. And they have programs for youth. And they have, you know, film series and art and lectures. And we are surrounded by a wealth of offerings. So if it means that we need to step it up as adults to try to guide the youth, then we should think about doing that.
Councillor Tesh?
Yeah, I think I would like to ask for a clarifying question to the councillor who proposed this, Norilis de Jesus, just to specify, you know, what, from the reading that I'm looking at, this, this seems to be a committee specialized just in youth sports. You know, I would think that if there are any other opinions on what things should we also further propose for the youth, maybe that could be something different, right? But I think for the sake of getting to act on, on solutions that we can provide to the youth, which we know are very necessary at the moment, you know, then I think this is a nice first step of just getting this going. And then if there are any other different, again, alternatives, then we propose something for that purpose as well. So if I can just have some clarification from councillor de Jesus.
Councillor de Jesus?
Thank you, councillor. So I will just clarify first off that the reason why the order was introduced under my name is because as council president, the creation of any committee would have to be introduced by the council president. But again, I don't wanna take full credit, although I think it is a magnificent idea. The idea came from our councillor, vice president, Taylor, and interest from our councillor Robinson. I will highlight that to councillor Teshi's point, there are multiple layers of initiatives and, and programs that our youth very much deserve. I don't think that we can accomplish all of them. I will go back to councillor Recupero's comment. A youth center is at the top of that list. And I know that our city manager has been working on touring other communities and finding ways for us to make that dream possible. But to councillor Brown's point, if there is interest for a subcommittee, I am open to it. If the council recommends that we continue with this order to specifically talk about that portion of sports that I know many youth in the, in the community are requesting as well, that I'm also for it. I'm just glad that we're having this conversation and that youth are in the center of, of, of our conversations here in the chamber. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one bit of clarification from, that because, because this is a subcommittee, because this is a subcommittee. I, I'm not speaking on the, I'm clarifying about a, a subcommittee versus a special committee versus a subcommittee on conference. Any councillor can participate in any subcommittee. And, and, and everybody, I think, that is interested about any subcommittee can participate. So that, that is the clarification that I wanted to provide everybody as far as the difference between the special committee and the subcommittee on conference. Councillor Garcia?
Hi, team. As a former school committee member and chairwoman, I'd like to remind folks that we are not alone in this fight for our youth. Our school committee members are fighting day in and day out for this as well. And so it is highlighted in their, in this booklet, which is our strategic plan, our Chelsea Public Schools Strategic Plan. It's listed under priority number two. And so just know that there are also incredible programming within our schools. If you have youth in your community, which I know you do, invite them to participate in these programs that already exist. We have two-year college program. We have, there's a series of things that Malik, Malik is working on. Shout out to him and his team from Central Office. Once again, there is a common theme here that I'm hearing, that we care for our youth, we want our youth to be more engaged. And I believe that this subcommittee and the other subcommittee on recreational, like forgetting the name, we are all doing the same work. And so I am hopeful that something will come from these conversations. Thank you.
Can we get the clarification on if it's being moved to subcommittee on conference?
I'm ruling that out of order.
Challenge it here. You can't rule it out of order.
There was a, there was a, there was a creation of a, of a, excuse me, you're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You are out of order. The, excuse, excuse me. The president created, the, excuse, councillor Brown, you are out of order. President de Jesus created a special committee. That's it.
Yeah, we're not, I'm just asking it to move to a subcommittee. I'm not talking about the establishment of it. I'm just asking it to be moved to the subcommittee on conference.
Then, then.
That's the order.
So are you making a motion to move the entire subject to a subcommittee on conference?
That's what I stated earlier. If there's no objection?
No objection?
Point of parliamentary clarification.
Councillor Jimenez?
So I just wanna under, make sure that I understand this. We are not taking a vote on whether there is an establishment of this special committee. The president has the power to do so, whether we have a subcommittee or not, whether it gets moved to conference subcommittee, whether it gets moved to the recreational affairs subcommittee. The special committee is created, correct?
That's correct. The council president does have the authority under the rules to create special committees and select a membership and select a chair of said committee. Council does not have the authority to interfere with that process.
Therefore, if we were to move anything to conference, it would be a conversation about the special committee, which has already been created?
You can make a motion to refer the topic to a subcommittee on conference, but that will not change the fact that under this communication that was presented, the committee has been created by the council president with the chairperson and the members designated there. And if you wanna move the entire topic itself to have a conversation about it at a subcommittee on conference, that's fine. But it doesn't change the gist of the fact that the committee has been created, that the members listed on the communication.
As long as that is what councillor Brown intended to make by his motion, I withdraw my objection.
That's what I stated.
All right. That's what, that's what he said, apparently.
Have the order been adopted?
There's no order. Doesn't need to be adopted.
Next order of business, we move on to committee reports. We have a committee report received from councillor president de Jesus regarding the meeting of the subcommittee on conference held on February 12th, 2024.
Mister vice president, I would like to accept and file if there, suspend the rules, if there are no objections, I would like to speak on it.
You have the floor.
Thank you. So I'll be brief. This meeting was basically just our city manager giving his 100 days communication. He has been out and about doing many, many tours in the city, greeting folks, doing listening sessions. He has a complete open door policy, so if anyone has any questions regarding the topics that he has listed as priority, you are more than welcome to reach out. I'll just read a few briefly. Public safety, support of our schools, city services, housing, youth, workforce development, public infrastructure, environment, sustainability, community, and public health. And so the conversations have been ongoing. If anyone has any questions, you can reach out to our city manager. Thank you.
Next, we have a committee report received from councillor Sandiget regarding the meeting of the subcommittee on public safety held on February 12th, 2024.
Councillor Sandiget?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt and file under suspension, seeing no objection. And I would like to speak on it, please.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanted to share some of the initiatives that the police department, together with the city, has put together, particularly during this time of what seems to be an uptick in youth violence. Unfortunately, some of the violent episodes have happened in my district as recently as Friday. Very, very alarming, very concerning. I feel confident that the initiatives that I will share with you are, will definitely work toward making our city safer, but we all need to keep working on this. So let me share a few things that have been put together. There's a youth hub now, and they met for the first time last week, and it's collaboration with the Chelsea Police Department and the various service providers in our city. That's in addition to the regular hub that meets every week as well. The community service divisions will be opening, reopening the substation on Washington Ave, and it's going to be a community engagement center. There'll be a ribbon cutting in mid-March. So that will be good to have that substation open again in our community. Chelsea Police Department is adding two more school resource officers. And also, the youth engagement division, which has been formed specifically to address the issues of youth violence. And someone from this division will be joining the night shift. We no longer have a gang task force. This is the youth engagement division now. And finally, city manager Maltez has been having weekly meetings from 4:30 to 5:00 on Mondays for an update from the chief and the police department for the city. And that has been important for us to know what's been happening so we can, again, help and all be in this together. So again, I'm very troubled and concerned. And we just have to keep at it. Hopefully, the, we'll be able to organize meetings in the neighborhood so that, at least in my district, District Five, people can meet with the chief and we can talk about how we can work together to keep our district safe. And I've encouraged the police department to also have more community meetings in other areas of the city so that, again, everyone can be in on trying to tackle this increase of violence. Thank you.
Next, we have a committee report received from councillor Recupero regarding the meeting of the subcommittee on elder affairs, veteran services, and community advancement held on February 12th, 2024.
You have the floor.
This committee was regarding veterans when we have events, how we go about, how the city goes about making these events a better for the veterans and for all the constituents that come. Have a, what's an easy way to put it? To have a better way of spending the day than we have before. And to be more coordinated among the veterans officer downstairs, the city, and all the people in our city. I think it went very well, and the people will be pleasantly surprised that this year we'll have a better Veterans Day, Memorial Day, all the events the veterans go will be a better, will be much, I hope it'll be better. If it doesn't get any better, we'll call a subcommittee again to make sure that it gets better. Thank you.
Just to add to my colleague, I think it's important that we upgrade Memorial Day and Veterans Day. And what I, what I mean is that we need to reach out to veterans who are speakers that we can bring to the city to talk about veterans and their experience and be able to draw more community people to come out to the events. And I think it's gonna take all of us to make this happen and always make it to approve, get to the, get to the next step every time you wanna approve from one year to the next year. And that's the goal of the committee is to do that.
Next, we have a committee report received from council president de Jesus regarding the meeting of the subcommittee on conference held February 20th, 2024.
Chair, I ask to accept and file under suspension if no objections, and I'd like to speak.
So ordered.
Thank you. So this was the municipal aggregation energy efficiency plan. This was held February 20th, and we got briefed from our city manager and several department heads on the Chelsea Electricity Choice electric aggregation plan, which would allow Chelsea to secure a supply of electricity for residents and businesses. One, it provides stable and competitive electricity prices. It's also going to be provided cleaner electricity, and our residents will have a choice. It'll, it'll allow new electricity choices. The council, back in 2019, authorized the city manager to develop this plan. And so in 2021, we submitted the plan, and it was received and approved on December 2023. Prior to rolling out this plan, we will definitely be doing public education and making sure that our community is informed and that there's space for questions. But there will be more to come. Thank you.
Next, we have a committee report received from councillor Brown, chair of the subcommittee on rules and administration, meeting held February 26th, 2024.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I ask that we accept and file this under suspension if there's no problem or no objection.
So ordered.
Thank you, Mr. President, Vice President. Again, we had a meeting regarding the rules and regulations and also just some conversation about proceedings, scheduling subcommittees. We spoke for about an hour and a half. We had our city solicitor there. We got a little clarity, a little more understanding of, you know, how things would roll and work with our city clerk here for the council and try to smooth it out as the newer council members get more, you know, used to putting in orders and addressing orders. We decided we were gonna revisit again later on in a few months. We decided we were going to revisit again later on in a few months, and if we needed to make some changes, we will look to make those changes that were discussed at the meeting. Thank you. I don't know if any of my colleagues that was at that meeting would like to speak.
Moving on.
Next, we have a committee report received from Councilor Taylor regarding the meeting of the Subcommittee on Ways and Means held February twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Counselor Taylor, how do you wish to proceed?
Thank you, Madam President. So, in this committee meeting, we went over several financial orders, and I'm just going to go through them quickly, so that the public understands exactly what was, what was discussed. There were two orders that had nothing to do with the Department of Public Works, and the rest all did. So, the city initially created a special purpose stabilization fund to hold funds received as part of the state's settlement with the opioid manufacturers. Following new guidance from the state as to how the funds were to be used, it was determined that the best option was to revoke the council vote, creating that fund, and create a new special revenue fund. The next, the next thing, what, Order F thirty, twenty-four F thirty-five, reflected the increased contract costs with the contractor utilized by the city for street line painting. Half the contract had already been funded with the supplemental appropriation from free cash to be used to pay for the rest. The next one was the replacement for a vehicle that had been totaled in, in an accident, the insurance company reimbursed nine thousand dollars, the free, free cash request was the total cost of the replacement vehicle, and the amount received by the insurance company will reimburse the city for rebalance. The next order was about the implementation of a new cloud-based GIS system to reduce the need for public work staffs to return to City Hall to look up needed information. The next order was the con, regarding the contract with the engineering company utilized by the city related to the restoration of the commuter rail Quiet Zone. The funds will be used to sign a new contract as the project continues. The next one was about funds to be utilized to complete the utility project adjacent to the INES development on Central Avenue, and the ongoing work at the site has made it difficult to complete the work, the required utility work. And the next two, the next two were free cash requests regarding the electrical bill from Eversource, both for streetlights and for traffic signals. The third one was the electric bill for public buildings. Sorry about all these free cash requests, there was a great many of these requested by the city manager, all necessary. Also during construction projects, the materials that can't be returned to the ground are removed from the site and stored in the city yard, funds need to be used to remove the excess debris from the yard. Another free cash request is support for the fire suppression system on Admiral's Hill Fire Pump Station. The next one had to do with funding to the account for increased salary for the city councillors and the city council clerk. And the final two were regarding funding for the overtime in structures and grounds, and then streets and sidewalks. That's, that's, that's it in a nutshell. Hopefully, we'll have a, in, in, in upcoming reports, there'll be less free cash requests, but we'll, we'll, we'll see how it goes. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brown, you have the floor.
So is it any way that you can provide how much increase there was for the salary of the city council's account for funding? Was that a request in dollars?
There's an, there's an order under New Business, under Second Readings, I believe it's eighty-six five.
Okay. Eighty-six, okay, thank you.
Uh, Counselor Taylor. Oh, yes. Actually, Counselor, CIP, the, the next order is the CIP plan, and it's posted online, both in English and Spanish, so I'll just ask one of my colleagues if they could accept and file on my behalf.
No objections.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to second readings.
Move on to Second Readings. We have a communication received from City Manager Fidel Maltese requesting approval of appointments, of appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions being read for the second time. Dear Councilors pursuant to Section four dash two of the Charter of the City of Chelsea, I am writing to recommend the following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the cultural council, Mr. William Kaufman of Chelsea for a three-year term expiring February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-seven. I am also recommending for appointment to the Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Lauren Sokol of Chelsea, to complete the unexpired term of Ms. Caroline Byrd, who resigned. The term expires June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Requesting your approval of the appointments, copies of applicants' resumes are attached.
Yeah, move to roll call vote.
Counselor Coopero and Counselor Taylor, move to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, the appointments are approved.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time regarding the revocation of the vote to establish a special purpose stabilization fund for opioid settlements. Whereas the Chelsea City Council approved the establishment of an opioid settlement stabilization fund on June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas the Chelsea City Council appropriated the sum of two hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-six cents from free cash to the opioid settlement stabilization fund, which is equal to the amount received by the city from opioid litigation settlements in FY twenty-three, and no funds have been expended to date. And whereas Massachusetts Governor Maury Healy-
We can waive the rest of the reading and proceed to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
Point of parliamentary inquiry?
Yep.
Do those have, do these votes that are coming up that Counselor Taylor just went over on the report have to be taken individually? Okay.
How many votes we need?
This is a transfer, so this will require a two-thirds majority, eight votes. Roll call votes requested, a yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero? Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten members in favor, none opposed, one absent, two-thirds being in favor, the order is adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of one hundred and sixty thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Roman Improvements Account.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of thirty-one thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty-four Parking Department Automobiles Account.
How does the council wish to proceed?
Move to roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor being read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of forty thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Contracts Services Account.
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars from free cash to the FY twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Other Capital Account for construction activity to restore the Quiet Zone in Chelsea.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yep.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order is adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of four hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the CIP Fiscal Year Twenty-two Central and Willow Water, Sewer, Roadway Construction Account for utility work related to the Central Avenue project surrounding the INES development.
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of ten thousand dollars from free cash to Fiscal Year Twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Streetlights Account.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of eight thousand dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Traffic Signals Account.
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote, yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of twenty-two thousand dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-two DPW Structures and Grounds Lighting Account.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero? Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of forty thousand dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-two DPW Streets and Sidewalks Vehicle Maintenance Account.
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
Roll call vote requested, yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas is absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of forty thousand dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-two DPW Solid Waste Trash Pickup Disposal Account.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars from water retained earnings to the Fiscal Year Twenty-four Water Enterprise Other Capital Account for the Admiral's Hill Water Pump Station Fire Suppression System.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Tejera?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vegas, absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor de Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of eighty-six thousand five hundred dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-two Legislative Department Regular Salary Account.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Um, I'm looking for it, it's here. Yes, it used to be eighty-six thousand?
Eighty-six-five.
Okay, alright, that's fine, okay.
There was a yes?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of thirty-five thousand dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-twenty-four DPW Structures and Grounds Overtime Account.
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
Yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted. And we have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor read for the second time. Order that the Chelsea City Council authorizes the appropriation of one hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the Fiscal Year Twenty-twenty-four DPW Streets and Sidewalks Overtime Account.
Counselor Taylor?
Move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Taylor moves to a roll call vote.
A yes vote to adopt. Counselor Teshia?
Yes.
Counselor Taylor?
Yes.
Counselor Vega is absent. Counselor Tenary Garcia?
Yes.
Counselor Saniget?
Yes.
Counselor Jimenez Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor De Jesus?
Yes.
Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Coopero?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly Garcia?
Yes.
And Counselor Robinson?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, order adopted.
Thank you, Clerk.
Thank you, Clerk. Thank you, Clerk. Moving on to new business.
We move on to new business. We have an order introduced by Counselor Taylor regarding the Fiscal Year Twenty-twenty-five Capital Improvement Program Loan Order.
Move to Subcommittee on Ways and Means, please.
Do you wish to delay a second reading? And public hearing? Order two-four-F-four-nine? Counselor Robinson?
Should be moved to a second reading and, uh, scheduled a public hearing to be held.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor, you've been a busy guy in this last round, it's okay. We'll let it slide.
Okay. Move to, bo- boo, move to a second reading and, uh, and a public hearing.
Thank you, Counselor.
The public hearing will be scheduled for the eighteenth, our following meeting.
Thank you, Clerk, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Coopero. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Conference be held with the City Manager and Department of Public Works Commissioner to provide an update to the City Council on planned construction-related street closures and the process by which the city informs residents about closures and detours.
Counselor Coopero?
I did not under suspension, there's no objection, like to speak on it.
The floor is yours.
The city manager provided me with, uh, a sheet, but the sheet says a certain dates. I want all the councils to understand and the people how it actually operates and how we can go about making it a better way for the people to understand it even more. I know we have an app, we have this, we have that, but a lot of people don't have these apps, a lot of people don't have a lot of things, and they can't understand exactly. But I want all of us to actually understand when they're gonna do the work, how long it's gonna take for the work, and how they're gonna go about making it easier for traffic flow, because that seems to be the biggest problem, is traffic flow. Whenever you do something like that in a small city, our city's only one point eight square miles, it's very small, and there's a lot of one-way streets. If you start closing this one and closing that one, then you get a big traffic jam. And I wanna make sure that we don't get that. I've been saying that through the years, and maybe now with a new city manager and, uh, with new city councils, we can actually achieve the goal of making life better for the people that live in our city when construction happens, instead of these construction companies coming and doing whatever they want to. I could tell you near Park Street, there's, uh, five spots taken by construction because they're doing work. They have a truck with a plow, and there's a specific, we have an ordinance in our city specifically saying that anything that's movable with wheels should be moved, if they're not moved. So you tell me what is the reason for a truck with a plow being parked right over there taking three parking spots away from people? That shouldn't happen. I can understand that you have big machinery that can be moved, that you have to load up on a truck and then bring it back, but anything that has wheels that could be moved should be moved, because the residents deserve a place to park. They shouldn't just come into our city and say, "This is what we're gonna do, and there's nothing you can do about it." That's not true. We can do something about it. And what we can do is make sure that these people follow the rules, just like our residents have to follow the rules. That's all I want when we have this committee, we'll get trying to iron out some of these ways for these companies to come in and make it better for our residents and don't make it worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Jimenez?
I just wanna thank Counselor Coopero for bringing, for, uh, bringing this up and wanting to have the conversation. I'm just wondering if we should, instead of using the conference committee, use the committees that, the subcommittees that we have. It helps us make sure that we, if we don't have six people, we can still have the meeting so that we have a smaller quorum. I would suggest, um, it, that this be referred to the Subcommittee on Planning Development and Transportation for further conversation, but I would leave that to the Counselor.
Does it matter to me, Subcommittee and conference to me that all of us come? I know all of us can come regardless, but when you do a Subcommittee and conference, it makes sure that any of us that come, I invite it to come, and we all, everybody talks. And that thing, I think it's better that we all under, talk with each other more.
Seeing no other comments, we're gonna move on to the next order. Thank you, Counselors.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Order that the City Manager provide to the City Council a report on the number of abatements provided by the city with a report listing the amount the city had to rebate for each category as opposed to the name of the specific landlord.
Counselor Robinson?
I adopt this unanimously under suspension. I think it's appropriate for us to know how many abatements are being requested each year, and what is the dollar number that we are being rebated back to those who apply for abatements.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Robinson. Order that the Chelsea City Council President contact the city's representative on the Northeast Metro Regional Vocational School Committee and provide an update to the Council on the committee's last meeting.
Counselor Kelly Garcia, how do you wish to proceed? Oh, sorry. Sorry, correction. Counselor Robinson introduced it, um, I know Counselor Garcia has comments. You have the floor, Counselor.
Adopt this unanimously under suspension. Actually, there was a meeting held on February eighth, so I'm looking for some information in regards to the meeting, and also I have concerns that there's a case with the EPA concerning a road that they're trying to buil- uh, build, and there's been a suit that's taken place. I'm concerned about some educational issues there. So we all understand that there's two boards that are there. There's the Regional School Committee Board, there's a Building Committee Board, so it's two separate boards, and we need to be paying attention to both. And I know that we got a letter back in regards to, uh, the monies to decrease, but what does that really mean? I, I, I read this letter, I don't quite understand it, so I'm looking for some clarification in regards to that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kelly Garcia?
So team, um, as a delegate to the school committee, I, I commit to providing updates on a monthly basis. I will work with Blanca to provide a formal report for this body in addition to the meeting minutes from the school committee meetings.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Taylor?
Yeah. Uh, I agree with, uh, with Counselor Robinson regarding this. I, I think it's important that we, we get a report about the things that are happening there, and especially about any impending litigation and the details on decreased costs. So all of that, I think, needs to get reported back to us so that we can, um, uh, have all the information that we need about what's going on and, 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 you know, if there's action needed on our part on some, for, for some subsequent thing, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Okay, seeing no other comments, moving on.
We have an order introduced by Counselor Teshia. Order that a meeting of the Subcommittee on Parks and Public Works be held with the Department of Public Works Commissioner to discuss current and planned infrastructure projects in Chelsea.
Counselor Teshia, how do you wish to proceed?
Move to adopt under suspension of the rules. If there are no objections, I'd like to say a couple of words.
You have the floor.
Um, I think it was only minutes after I put in the order, I got an email from the city manager, very, very responsive, very quickly, nice. Um, and on that response, it was a document where we were getting a, essentially a live update on, um, all the current, uh, projects and, and the ones that have under, um, undergone already and completed. Um, so far, I see thirty-eight total. Um, this is amazing, you know, I'd like to thank for the quick response on that. Um, I think, um, we're really gonna have a good time having that Subcommittee just being able to, um, now that the whole council has access to all the projects, um, come up with a couple of questions if any are interested to show up at that Subcommittee, um, just to be, uh, completely informed. Um, that would be it, yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on.
Next, we have an order introduced by Counselor Coopero. Order that the City Manager instruct relevant departments to look into the design, purchase, and installation of Welcome to Chelsea signs to be installed at the Chelsea Street and Meridian Street Bridge.
I like to adopt under suspension, there's no objection, like to speak on it?
The floor is your Counselors.
Uh, for years, I've been asking for these signs. Actually, these signs ain't gonna cost the city anything. The city doesn't have to spend a dime for these signs, because there's a fund which is given to Eastern Mineral each year to, it's called a beautification for the District Six, for the district that it, it's in, and it's, uh, it has money. I asked where the money is and how it's spent. So if I've been asking for this, right, I want to know exactly why can't they purchase? You look all over the city, there's welcome signs everywhere, except there's none, when you come off the Meridian Street Bridge, it doesn't say Welcome to Chelsea. When you come in from the Chelsea Street Bridge, it doesn't say Welcome to Chelsea. Why not? If you have it everywhere else, put them there too.